Welcome to the Board of Selectmen Special Meeting, November 7th, 2025. It is 10:01 a.m. I'm calling the meeting to order, and I would like everybody to rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we will start off with public audience. Because we're on Zoom, I'm going to ask Tom Fitzgerald to manage the timer. So everybody knows they have five minutes. You can look on your laptop and we will probably stop you at five minutes. So I don't have a signup sheet for the order. I'm just interested to know who's here for public audience. I see Ellen. I see Lori. Who else? Anybody else? Okay, so Ellen, Tom, you want to, you want to take it away, Ellen?
Good morning. This is Ellen Gilbert. I live at 126 Hop Meadows Street in Wheaton. And I have a few issues to bring up. In terms of the Eno Memorial Parking Lot, I wanted to be known that since the parking lot opened, I have had to go around and around and around the parking lot to find a space that opens up so that I can park. There it just isn't enough, and I, I'm not sure how that is going to be remedied. But with all that we've done to enhance the parking lot, it's, it's not serving the community's needs. And on Wednesday, it's been a big topic of conversation at the Wednesday noon time lunches. The other thing is that there are only four handicapped spots. And we have many more residents that come on Wednesdays that have the handicapped placards for their cars and they need the space. The other thing is that on the north side of Eno Parking Lot, where we have the old ramped entrance to the lower level of Eno, the sidewalk that has been built on that side does not have a ramp. And so it makes it difficult for residents that have rollator walkers, walkers, or have difficulty lifting their feet and at one at a time and taking the full weight on one leg so that they can step up onto the sidewalk. We really need a ramped area on both sides of the building in the back. The other thing that I want to mention, which is a different topic on the agenda, is 15 Sugarloaf. And I wondered if the, oh, the part of the property, which is all of 22 acres, if the property that is not rented, i- if that could be made as open space, since particularly since it's not buildable. And that would increase the amount of open space that Simsbury has on its rosters. So those are the, the topics that I thought long and hard during the night about. So thank you very much. That's it.
Thank you, Ellen, for your thoughtful comments. I, I see Lori, I think you're next.
Hi, I'd like to start by congratulating the candidates who've been reelected to the board. But the reality needs to be pointed out that more than half of the people who voted resoundingly did not want Wendy to represent them again. More than half of the voters voted for anyone other than Wendy. And this meeting is a perfect example of why. It is unheard of to have such an important Board of Selectmen meeting at 10 o'clock in the morning, while most people, the people supporting this town with their tax dollars, are at work to earn those tax dollars. It is even more unheard of to have the meeting on a Friday morning, no less. Even worse is to not hold the meeting in person where you have to face the residents and taxpayers directly. The whole meeting smells to high heaven. It's incredibly convenient that voting to take more taxpayer dollars out of reserves that exist because we were overtaxed in the first place is taking place three days after the election. And the public wasn't notified about the very unusual special meeting until almost 5 o'clock, when most people had already voted on Election Day. Oh, I know, there will be 100 excuses for this. The town manager is going out on medical leave. We somehow didn't know in the planning and budgeting for this huge project that we would actually need sprinkled sprinklers in a commercial building, and we didn't have figures or the information until right on Election Day. But the cold, hard truth of the matter is that this is the very same playbook that unfolds on every single project. From the high school bleachers to the Flower Bridge, to this dumb green room for local inside business leaders to hold cocktail receptions for their clients, to wait for it, the upcoming splash pad, and the special school that keeps changing which students will attend. The nearly $400,000 additional taxpayer cost to this project being presented after ground has already broken is disingenuous. Anyone who worked on this plan and was this far off in the project projection in the private sector would be fired. Approving a nearly 50% increase in the town's already approved portion of this is gross negligence. That's it.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here for public audience? Could raise a hand. I guess not. Everybody's here to just listen. Okay, I did want to ask Mark to weigh in upfront about why we're having this special meeting, and I forgot to do that at the very beginning. We also had planned to get this out last week, and there was a miscommunication with Mark's office on that. But we did ask to have it out last Thursday. Mark, do you want to just provide context about your, your specific situation?
Happy to do it, Chair, and apologies to Lori and others in the public. So, you know, as Lori alluded to, I am going out on medical, just getting a knee replacement. It's a minor surgery. But the surgery is scheduled for Monday, the 10th, and there was just no avoiding it. Ordinarily, that wouldn't matter, but I just want the public to know that what's really on the agenda that is of such import is our Finance Director and Town Treasurer, Amy Meriwether, is here with you tonight to review the year-end reports. And I just want to take a minute on this because it's why I asked the First Selectman and the Deputy First Selectman to please have a special meeting and allow me to be present. And with your permission, Chair, I just want to say at the top that this is important to me because our staff worked all year. What we're doing today is reviewing the year-end numbers for the fiscal year ended June 30th. For all the departments, we're doing year-end transfers. This is a vital part of what makes Simsbury the AAA bond-rated community that it is. And as you'll hear from our Finance Director in a little while, this was a tremendous year of success for this board, for the Board of Finance, and for the Board of Education, and for all of our staff, all of our department heads. And again, I'm very appreciative to the Board of Selectmen for holding a special meeting today to allow me to thank my staff and the team. Many departments are turning in surpluses. Many departments have worked and managed to their budgets. The number one thing that this board judges me on as your town manager is year-end performance, meeting the budget that you set. And that's why we're having this special meeting today. I wish I could have been with you on the 10th. It has nothing to do with SIMPAC. And as you'll see and will comment, Mr. Roy is here just briefly on that. I would just say that the 388,000, 400,000, as a percentage of the overall budget, is well within what you often see with all projects. So it shouldn't be compared to a denominator of just the town portion. It should be compared to the denominator of the total project cost. And thank you, Chair, for the opportunity. I'll just echo congratulations to everyone that's returning and condolences to those that didn't win. And thank you for your time this morning, Chair. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mark. So we, we put some things on the consent agenda. I'm gonna ask for a motion to move Item A from Selectmen Action and Items A and B from Appointments and Resignation with thanks for those resigning.
No moved.
Second.
Is there any, um, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, is that six? Everybody voted? Okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first item for Selectmen Action is the year-end financial results, which I will turn over to our Finance Director to walk us, walk us through.
Good morning.
Morning.
Green with you. Okay. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so I'm going to start on the revenues. I will work through the general fund budget as that is our major operating budget throughout the town. And I'll take you through the revenues. I'll take you through the expenditures. You can see that there is a lot of information with all of our various special revenue funds. Happy to answer questions on those, but just going to give you the highlights. As in your packet, there is a detailed breakdown of all of our year-end results. So on the general fund side, I'll just start down here at the bottom. You can see that our total budget, 122,740, and then our actuals came in at 125,050. So this was a surplus on our revenue side of about 2.3 million. And then I will take you through the four main areas where there were significant variances that I just wanted to highlight. So if you look up here on the town clerk, you'll see that our budget estimates, we actually did not come in within budget on our town clerk's department. We were 52,000 below budgetary estimate. This is due to our reduced conveyance tax payments. So we had overbudgeted for sale of homes related to the conveyance tax, and that did not come to fruition for the end of fiscal year '25. So about $52,000 under budget there. Moving down to the tax department, as you know, during the budget season, our actual tax collection rate is about 99.5%. And we budget at 98.5%. So we do budget for surplus in this line item every year. That estimated surplus is about $770,000. We had also planned for during the budget process, a decrease in our motor, motor vehicle values. You might remember during COVID that motor vehicle values had spiked. And then, um, as we are starting to come out of COVID, we had anticipated that those motor vehicle values would start to come back down. Unfortunately, well, fortunately, unfortunately, those motor vehicle values stayed raised. So we were able to collect an additional about $600,000 on our motor vehicle supplemental bills. So our motor vehicle supplemental, we estimated about 600,000, and it actually came in at about 1.2 million. So the majority of that 1.1 million is made up of the 770,000 from the tax collection rate, and then our increased supplemental motor vehicle value due to the high vehicle values at about 600,000. Moving down to the Finance Department, you'll see that we came in in excess of budget by 833,000. We had conservative budget estimate at 4.25% for investment income. However, the majority of the year, our investment income was at about 4.5%. So some good news there relating to our investments and interest rates not coming down as fast as anticipated. Moving down to the Building Department, $530,000 in excess of budget. So this is something that happened during the spring season. We had some unanticipated permits or some larger permits than usual resulting in an increase of about 530,000 compared to the 700,000 that we had budgeted for. The actuals, as you can see here, are about 1.2 million. And that's all that's in that line item is the permit. We had a couple smaller things related to our ECS funding and our karma distribution, but those are the main highlights on the revenues. Any questions on the revenues before I move on to expenditures? Okay. On the expenditure side, again, we'll start with our, our budget about 1, again, 122,000, 122 million dollars. And our actuals came in at about 121 million dollars. Therefore, we had savings in our estimates of about 1.1 million. So again, three main areas that related to this overage. So first, we had about $620,000 in salary savings. So we had various departments, which you can see throughout the dark, without, throughout the document, document, oh my goodness, can't talk. The town manager's office, we had, we had some small savings in the town clerk's office related to salaries. Our biggest salary vacancy savings came from the police department. So we had a few vacancies in the police department. We had one in dispatch. And then we had some vacancies in the library that generated a lot of those savings. So that was the main area of why we saw such savings on the expenditure side. And then, of course, associated with those vacancies, we had some savings in our employee benefits. So you look at the employee benefits line item, we have about $553,000 in savings. So the majority of this is related to our medical insurance line item. There are a couple of reasons for this. So about 424,000 was related to our health insurance saving. It was related to our vacancies. And then in addition to our vacancies, we had changed our retiree health insurance this year, going from Anthem to retiree first. So we were paying $25,000 a month for these, for this insurance, and that had went down to $17,000 a month. So we were able to capture some savings in that line item related to the change in the insurance for our retirees in addition to the savings that was generated just from having staff vacancies. And then the last thing that contributed to the $500,000 in savings for our employee benefits is the Social Security allocation related to the vacancies, which was about $83,000. And then the last thing I just wanted to highlight on the expenditure side is you'll see here that we have a Board of Education surplus of about $111,000. So the Board of Education side, similar to the town side, there is a detailed report on this, but again, we had some staffing vacancies on the Board of Ed side, and then associated with that, we had some benefit savings. So the Board met and wanted to, instead of transferring it to their non-lapsing fund, they wanted to return this back to the town as a contribution towards the Two Farms Village property. Any questions on expenditures?
I have, I have a couple of questions, Amy. Just the vacancies that we had, it's always hard to go back to last year. Have they all been filled other than potentially the PD?
The police department has not been filled, you're correct. Town manager's office has been filled, planning has been filled. The library, I'm not sure. I'm going to need some help from Mark or Tom on that one. I believe the town office buildings, public works have been filled. So library is the only one I'm not, I'm not sure about, and parks has been filled.
We still have a couple of vacancies over there, and I can get the exact ones to you, Chair, by the end of the day. But yeah, the library does have a couple of vacancies still.
Yeah, and we usually get those at Personnel, which is next week, so we'll probably get that there. And then just a quick question on the legal services. The, the deficit, I just wanted to understand if that was mostly tied to the labor attorney as opposed to the retainer we have for Bob?
Yeah, so that one, so the retainer that we have for Bob is fully budgeted. That's not an overage. Anything that's an overage relates to anything outside of our, outside of our contract with Bob D. So it would be anything related to labor for negotiations. It would be related to any Board of Assessment tax appeals, things of that nature.
And Chair, if I could, just for the record, Bob, our town attorney, has recused on some complex litigation involving a development project. And we have outside counsel on that. And I think also he was conflicted out on one of the tax appeals, and we did get some legal fees from one of our other attorneys that, and we can get you that name if you need it, but Amy's correct. Is, he's actually on target for the annual, you know, retainer wasn't the issue.
Just another question, and I, I don't, I have no idea of the answer. When, you know, zoning or there's, there's a legal thing on, you know, between zoning and a developer, is that show up here or is that show up somewhere else?
No, that would show up here.
Okay. Okay, that's, I'm good.
Great question. We're, we're paying those bills. Thank you, Chair.
Anybody else have questions on those? Okay.
Okay, so moving on to the capital project summary. So this, I'm just going to touch base with just, because I just haven't presented this to this board. So I just wanted to give you a breakdown of, you know, what the schedule is, why we have it, and then as it relates to the three motions that you have in your packet. So this tab here is just our capital schedule. So this is anything for our major capital projects that's over 250,000. And then on this schedule, you'll see we have our CNR schedule, which is anything capital related that is under 250,000. So on this worksheet, you'll see that we have inception year, we have what the project is, we have the amount of the appropriation, and then we have all of our expenditures. So anything prior to June, the current fiscal year, prior to June 30th, 2024, anything that happened in the current fiscal year, and then where we landed as of the end of June 30th, 2025. So since these are rolling projects, we track year over year, their, their spending in total and what the remaining balance is. So I just wanted to point this out because you can see over here, any projects that are anticipated to be closed out, they've either been spent down or the work is done, and we are anticipating closeout of these projects either this year or if it has a, a date notated next to it from, say, fiscal year '29, it's because we need that five-year payback to catch up to the project. So the inception year is fiscal year '25, and then we'll make contributions to this project utilizing the five-year payback. And then after the end of the five years in fiscal year '29, all of the funding will have gone to the project, and then the project can be closed out. So in accordance with our, our Board of Finance policies related to, to capital and CNR, there is one policy that states that any project that has gone more than three years without any spending automatically has to be closed out. So the department does not get to keep those funds any longer. And if they want to keep those funds for any specific purpose, those funds have to be re-appropriated by the board. So in this case, for example, fiscal year '21, we have a Parks and Rec Garage Ventilation Project, and it's $10,000. This is well over the three-year threshold. There's been no spending on this project, and therefore the project is automatically closed out. When I talked to Tom Tversky on this project, he asked that the money be reallocated or re-appropriated, I'm sorry, re-appropriated so that they can utilize the, the spending on these funds in the cart in the upcoming fiscal year. So there's three projects related to this. There is the Parks and Rec Garage Ventilation Project. There is the Meadows Facilities Maintenance Project. And then there is 75,000 for Pavilion Repairs Project that Tom Tversky has requested those, those funds be re-appropriated for use in the coming year. So that's why you have those three motions in your schedule. It's not asking for additional money. It's just re-appropriating the money that they already have because per the policy, their time ran out on utilizing those funds.
I have some questions, one that's appropriate regarding the three projects. Well, two of the three, to be frank. Is now a good time or should I wait for the summary?
No, go ahead.
Okay, just to recap, there's three projects that fell off the book. One is the PNR, Parks and Rec Garage Ventilation Project. The second one is Meadows Facilities Maintenance Project. And the third one, which I'll just clarify for anyone that doesn't know, is the Pavilion down at Terriffel Park, and that we've been held up on FEMA. And I'm hopeful that we can still do for $75,000, but that's the one I don't have questions on because FEMA's still dragging their feet. We very well may have to reappropriate it again by the time they get around to doing their job. The first two, however, Parks and Rec, these precede my term as a select person, so I'm not really knowledgeable of what they are. The Parks and Rec Garage Ventilation Project and the Meadows Maintenance Project. And the term maintenance implies it needs to be done within three years. So my question is, why were these not done? And why are we re-upping? And then the third part, I'll just give you all the questions upfront, Amy, and then you can respond. How is it the same price three years later? There's nothing we've bought that three years later had a same price. So if this is budgeted in $2021, there, there's some flaws to the whole thing. So whenever you're ready. Thank you. That's my questions.
So on the, so I don't know if I'll be able to answer all of them. I might need some insight from Tom Tversky, and I might have to get back to you, Amy. So the Parks and Rec Garage Ventilation Project, so you're right, they weren't able to do it for the $10,000, and they were looking for additional options and solutions to do it within the $10,000. And he feels like he's able to do it within the $10,000 in the upcoming year. So I don't think it was the original project that they had anticipated because it didn't fit within the budget, and now they're able to find an alternative solution that does fit within the budget.
So why would that not come up in the budget discussion as far as, it doesn't seem like it's the same thing where, if it's a reappropriation, to me at least, it would be the same project, but your implication there is it's a value-added project, or however Tom Roy always uses that term.
It's our favorite term.
I mean, so that, I mean, fair question. I don't know if I have an answer. I can follow up with Tom Tversky on that for you and get you the specifics on what they originally intended to do back in '21 compared to what they intend to do now for the, the value of the $10,000.
Okay. And do you have any insight on what Meadows Facilities Maintenance Project means?
Yes, I can. If you give me a minute, I can send that along to the group.
Sorry, I feel like I'm drilling you.
No, that's all right. That's what I'm here for.
I saw Tom come off of mute. I don't know if he was trying to weigh in.
He just wanted the value engineering credit.
I feel like you're asking, you know, Tom Roy to sub in for Tom Tversky, but I'm not familiar with that project.
So while, while Amy's doing a little due diligence there, are we able to break out the third one from the other two? And is time of the essence on the first two?
So yes, you can break them out. No, time is not of the essence. You can take it under consideration. It's just that they're on here in accordance with the policy.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Just looking for the capital project sheet.
So Amy, while you're doing that, just to fill the dead space, there is on page, I don't know, it's bullet point, it doesn't even, under capital funds. It says the project entitled Meadows Facilities Maintenance was unable to be scheduled until fall of It says the project entitled Meadows Facilities Maintenance was unable to be scheduled until fall of this year. Um, I don't know if that helps at all with trying to figure out what it is because it doesn't really refer to the specificity of what the maintenance is anywhere. I mean, if it's underway, fall of this year is now.
Right. I was gonna say that. Is it, is it happening now or has it happened? Guess it couldn't.
No, it hasn't happened because he hasn't had the updated appropriation.
Right.
I'm not seeing the project sheet either in our files.
It's okay, then I'm gonna be inclined to break it out for further information. So we don't need to dwell on it if that helps expedite the meeting Monday.
If, if I could, Amy, is this the mowing of the fields? That they had to wait until the fall because of the nesting birds? Does that sound right?
I don't know. I can't find the project sheet related to it. And since it was so long ago, I just don't remember what it is.
So I'm gonna be inclined to, to bump it, even to my this meeting, which.
Yeah, I was gonna say, once we're done, if we, if we wanna table those, motion to table those two to wait for the information, we can do that, right?
Yeah, we can have maybe Mark can reach out and have Tversky come on Monday.
Okay.
These are his. We probably should have had him come today.
It's no worries. Do you wanna just do that one day? Are you cool?
Sure, sure. I've been not sure, Amy's still going through the result, the, you know.
No, that was it for the capital. And then I'm ready when you are to go to.
Sorry, the, the Meadows project is electrical work along the field is what Tom T just said. I had to call him on the side.
And do you know if it's scheduled?
I know.
And what kind of electrical work does that mean? Like, i- is that? Can you define that a little bit more?
Don't we have music playing like on the game show?
Some elevator music.
There's some in the, in the hallway.
Give us some money, cause we can get the details.
Yeah, so it's, uh, old fences were taken out along Iron Horse, um, and so there's some outlets to repair and then a breaker panel to also repair.
Okay.
Not underway yet.
Okay, why don't we, why don't we just follow, you know, could do the motion to table them once we're done here? And then we could have the full information or have Tom come on Monday if that works.
Works for me. I'll make a motion for, um.
Well, we have, do you wanna finish the results or?
I, I think she was going to D was next for Amy. You can answer yourself. I'm sorry for, uh.
No, you're all right, Steve. Um, that, that's what I had for the results. I was just explaining what the motions were related to and then, um,
Okay.
I'll set you guys are.
I didn't know if you were gonna talk about the funds at all. That's all.
No, if anybody has specific questions, happy to answer, but I was just gonna go through the highlights on the general funds since that's our main operating fund.
Okay. All right. So let's, um, all right. So for any other questions on the results.
Uh, um, so all I'll offer is, and, and what Stephen was saying, um, maybe we could just wait on all three. We don't even need to break it out. And that's what I think I'm hearing is that we'll just talk about all three on Monday and any summary or document that we can get from Tom T. Um, to, to explain it, uh, it works for me if, if time is not of the essence. And, and what I've heard though, doesn't give me any concern. I just think that we need the information in order to vote on it. So I agree with, uh, tabling this until Monday.
Yeah, I was planning to move the, um, the Pavilion tonight, today. Because we have enough information and that is something that we obviously wanna continue focusing on.
I'll, I'll, I'll support that. If we decide to do that, it, it makes sense to me to keep them all together, but that's, uh, I'll, I'll follow the majority of the board.
Okay.
I'm for breaking it out. Just get it done. It, it seems the rubber stamp, not rubber stamp, nothing is rubber stamped, but.
Yeah, we don't rubber stamp here. So let me, um, I, I'll ask for a motion to table, um, today, November seventh, the reappoint, reappropriation of the ten thousand dollars for the P and R Garage Ventilation Project. And to also table the reappropriation of the ten thousand dollars for the Meadows Facilities Maintenance Pro- Project.
So moved.
Is there a second? Is that Diana? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Is that six? Is that everyone? And, um, a motion effective November seventh to reappropriate the seventy-five thousand dollars for the Pavilion. It's actually the Terriffel Pavilion Repairs Project.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's six. Okay. So that's the year-end results. And again, this will be, Amy, the Board of Finance because they tabled it last time. They're gonna do it at their next meeting on the eighteenth, so it, it'll be live and everybody could rehear this, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Um, so next up, we have the year-end general fund and capital transfers. So again, Amy, I'm gonna have you run the show here.
Thank you, Chair, this screen now. Okay, so, um, this first schedule that you're looking at, um, this is a summary of our fund balance and where we stand with just the preliminary results before any transfers. So you can see at the top here, we started our fund balance as of July first, twenty twenty-four with about, um, just shy of twenty-one million. And then, um, down here, this schedule here shows you basically what I just took you through. So where our final budget landed for our revenues, where our actual came in. And then our, um, over budget amount of about that two-point-three million. And then down here, the same thing related to our expenditures. So we have our final budget of one-twenty-two. We have our preliminary actual of the one-twenty-one, which is a, um, we came in, um, below expenditures of about that one-point-one. So if you take the surpluses from each of the revenues and the expenditures, you'll see that we have an, um, I'm sorry. You take your revenues minus out your expenditures and you'll see that we have an overall surplus of about three-point-four million. So that three-four, three-point-four million added to our fund balance as of July first. We have a revised fund balance as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five of about twenty-four million. And then going down here, you'll see the breakout of that twenty-four million. So we have part of this twenty-four million, which is non-spendable. So these are all of our prepaid expenditures. So we are not allowed to spend any funds for which, um, we've already spent the money prior to July one. Um, because we know that those expenditures are going out the door as of, um, as of July first of the next year. So that money has to be held within our fund balance. We have an assigned bun, uh, assigned fund balance. Um, there's many things here. These are the assignments that the Board of Finance made last year. So we had, um, some of the I B P O contracts, ASME contracts. We had some health insurance that they reserved for eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. And then we had some encumbrances, which essentially are, um, payable thing to be paid out. So then your remaining balance here of the twenty-four million is about twenty-two million, seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. And that is your unassigned for use for whatever, um, you know, the policy boards choose to spend it on. And that percentage is about seventeen-point-seven-seven percent. The, um, policy related to the Board of Finance is that anything over sixteen percent gets transferred out. Um, and I will take you through those, those transfers, um, in the next tab. But, um, for this page, any questions on basically the state of the state and where we landed as of June thirtieth before any transfers?
Is this where we discuss Station Street or is that the next letter?
That's common.
Okay.
Okay, I will move along then. Okay, so, um, that fund balance is, um, you know, again, we, we have anything over sixteen percent, which either gets transferred out or there are recommended uses. So if we move on to the next page for our closeout, um, Tom is here to answer your questions on the specific projects related to the HVAC and the supplemental. Um, I'm just gonna take you this, through this worksheet quick, um, just to show you how the numbers align and then he can go back and speak to the, the specific requests. Uh, but one of the requests is the town HVAC rooftop units replacement. Of that, um, surplus of three-point-four million, we're requesting eighteen thousand. The Station Street Supplemental, we're asking for a hundred-and-fifty-thousand. And then, um, like I just spoke to, anything over sixteen percent in general fund reserves gets transferred into the capital reserve. So to get those reserves down to sixteen percent, we can take two-point-eight million and transfer that into the capital reserve. Moving down to your unassigned, um, this is just a true up of the expenditures that were assigned last year that, um, we wanna unassign those and then we wouldn't wanna assign anything new this year. So the ASME contract has settled, the police contract has settled, the health insurance, we don't need. Um, the budget mailer, we did. The encumbrances last year have been paid. So all of those are gonna come out of our, our, our assigned fund balance. And then to go back into our assigned fund balance, we are going to have, um, the encumbrances for fiscal year twenty-five, which again are just basically payables that will be paid out in fiscal year twenty-six. And then we have, um, what you guys will be discussing today related to the Banshell project of about three-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand. We're just saying that we're holding that money. We're not saying that we're doing anything for it. We're just saying that that money is being held for our future use. Um, so that's gonna true up your, your assigned fund balance, but it's.
Amy, can I ask a quick question on that? Because, um, when I, when we look at the specific agenda item, it says it, the three-eighty-eight would be taken from capital reserves rather than assigned. Could you just explain that to me?
Yeah, so, um, where it was gonna come from was, um, I think this was done before that was taken, but that supplemental hasn't happened yet. So, um, we can, we're just keeping it assigned here. We're not actually taking the money. So if we decide to take it from capital reserves, then this will just become unassigned and it'll go back into, um, your unrestricted fund balance. It's basically saying we need, we know this expenditure is coming down the line. And, um, we just wanna use year-end savings to assign it. Doesn't really matter where it comes from. If you prefer, it comes from capital reserve, we can assign it in there. Or if you all do the supplemental appropriation today, then this will change to unassigned. Um, so it's, it's just a placeholder and this was done before the actual pack conversation. So we just play, we, we held it within the general fund.
Okay, I'll save, I could save that for the agenda item.
I have a question. Um, so, I mean, I see where you are, you know, we have everything kinda spelled out and equaling. But knowing that we have these year-end savings, you know, that we have these that ha- have, uh, come from various different places and we want to, uh, you know, we're gonna transfer to, to the capital reserve fund. I'm gonna throw that phone ringing. Are there other items that could be, uh, also looked at to fund from year-end savings at some point? And is that something we can bring up at, uh, another, uh, meeting? Um, you know, that we may have other items that need to be funded, um, other projects that may need to be funded that we can potentially look at.
Yeah, so absolutely. Um, so this money that's going into the capital reserve fund is unrestricted. So although it's not sitting in the general fund, it is for the use of the board at their discretion.
But it would, anything li- future, since we haven't really discussed anything new, would be done as an appropriation later on if we wanted to, correct?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Um, and then just taking you down to the, the fund balance summary. So your net increase to fund balance is that three-point-four, which if we go back to here, it's your, your surplus and your change in your fund balance of three-point-four million. And then we're requesting out to transfer that two-point-nine, which is your transfer to capital reserve and the two supplemental appropriations that Tom will speak to. This is your net, um, increase, sorry, increase to fund balance of four-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand. So you take your initial, um, July first fund balance amount of the twenty-million-eight-o-eight. You increase it by the four-forty-seven. So then your revised fund balance is twenty-one million, two-fifty-five. Down here, we go back to our revisions related to our non-spendable. So again, we have our prepaid items that need to stay in there until they are paid and then they can be released. And then you have your assigned fund balance, which is your three-eighty-eight plus your twenty-one of encumbrances. And then the remaining here is twenty-million-four-ninety, which is unassigned. And then you get to your sixteen percent of operating expenditures, which is in accordance with the Board of Finance policy. Um, so that is the breakdown of this page and I will let Tom speak to the HVAC project and the Station Street supplemental before we move on.
Okay. Um, so the HVAC project, uh, that Amy was talking about, we had originally, uh, budgeted two-hundred-seventy-five thousand dollars for this. Um, due to some changes at the federal level in the type of refrigerant that's now permissible in new units. Um, the cost went up exponentially. Um, the new refrigerant not only is it more expensive, but it is actually flammable. So all of the line sets and how they run through the building needed additional work and protection to make sure we were meeting um, appropriate code requirements for this new type of refrigerant. Um, we talked about this at one of the capital project, um, updates where what we did is we scaled back from replacing six units to replacing, um, two units and rehabilitating, um, the other four. If we are able to add in this additional eighteen thousand, there's enough funding available that we would be able to replace three of the units and rehab three, which I think would, um, be a better use of our funds, especially considering these units are twenty-five years old and are going to need to be replaced at some point. Um, they're large units. They're gonna be put on the roof with a crane. So once we have the crane out, they're setting two units or three, it certainly is beneficial. And it's gonna add not only to the efficiency of the building, both in terms of energy use, it's also gonna improve the comfort, um, associated with our heating and cooling system. Any questions or?
What's the total budget? This isn't even, it's like a percent.
It's right. This would push us from, uh, the two-seventy-five and then we're just adding the eighteen thousand to that.
Okay.
Do you wanna add that in your head, Steve?
No, I'm using my calculator. Help it. It's the way I am. It's six-point-five percent.
Yeah.
Okay, and Station Street?
Uh, Station Street is, uh, I'm gonna say an exciting project and then we've been doing the work designing it in-house. Uh, we had to do a few more, um, really engineering things related to the interconnection with Route Ten. Uh, Connecticut D O T asked for, you know, traffic counts and some other things that were a little beyond what we originally anticipated and some different configurations where we come into, um, Hot Meadow Street, which is essentially their roadway. Um, we also have seen just, you know, non-stop increases in construction costs and asphalt costs. So we're looking to add a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to bring the total project up to three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. Uh, we had originally looked at going back and seeing if we could increase our steep grant, which is currently covering a hundred-and-sixty-thousand of this project. And unfortunately, we are at the limit for the steep grant. So, um, and as I would say with all projects, um, if for some reason we bring it in at three hundred, we'd be happy to turn back any extra funds, but.
What's drainage pipe identified signify?
Uh, so as part of the work, as we're moving the edge of the roadway to the south, uh, some of that drainage work, um, the street drainage, the curbs, the inlets needs to be pushed back. And, um, that area of Simsbury is very old and there is some, um, infrastructure there that we were not aware of and we found some pipes that nobody had ever told us they were put in. Uh, so there's just a bit of drainage and coordination work that we wanna be prepared for.
Okay. So is that just an, is that a known or that's a cover your tush type thing?
I, I'm gonna go with choice B on that one.
Okay, that's C Y T.
It's a known unknown.
Yeah.
Okay. Did you have any other questions?
Did no, I, 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 do we make a motion?
Well, I'm waiting to make sure we're, I think, are we done? Amy.
Um, no, I have two more schedules. Do you want me to go quick? All right. Um, so the general fund year-end budget transfers, this is something that we do for the audit. So we have our final budget. We have an, um, additional appropriation or budget reduction to get to the adjusted budget. So your adjusted budget is just your actual spending. So for the audit, we need to clear out the budget so that there's no variances. So you're basically taking your final budget, you're truing it up to your actual numbers. And then anything in between is just a plug to get to that number. So that at the, um, the bottom line, we don't do it for the Board of Education. But your bottom line is you do all of those budget transfers within each department, um, to get to your, your total at the end of where you landed. Um, so that's just a schedule for the audit. We don't do it internally, um, so that's what you're approving there. And then the last schedule to take you through is our capital closeouts. So, um, anytime a project is completed, we have to close out that project. And to close out that project, any funding that is still left in the project or if the project has an overage, it needs to be cleaned up and zeroed out. or if the project has an overage, it needs to be cleaned up and zeroed out. So just to take you through um from top to bottom, so we have our transfers to the sewer use fund. So for this capital project, we had our Pine Hill Sewer Replacement. There was twenty seven thousand dollars left in the project. And the value of the surplus goes back to the origination of the funds. So the sewer use fund paid for this project. So anything that is um coming in under budget is going to go back to the sewer use fund. So that's what these three projects are here. So all three projects were paid for via the sewer use fund. And any surpluses are going back to the sewer use fund. Similar down here to our Town Eight Road, we had a medium duty trailer. Um, we had a slight sur- slight surplus of about nine hundred and eighty four dollars. Again, it was paid for via Town Eight Road Grant Fund, so then that nine hundred and eighty four thousand has to go back to Town Eight Road. The same thing for your Belton Trust, your Dial-A-Ride Fund. Um, this one is a request which um, again, we need Tom Spursky oversight and him not being here, is that they had a Memorial Park Athletic Fields mower that came in um about sixteen thousand dollars under budget. And then subsequently, he also has a a pool wood sun deck replacement project, which is actually in deficit sixteen thousand dollars if he were to move forward with it. So he would like to move forward with this project and utilize the savings from the field mower um to fund the pool sun deck replacement. And then um down here, we have the transfers to the fiscal year twenty six and fiscal year twenty seven.
Maybe real quick, um, just while we're on that, that um, is it exactly fifteen thousand dollars that it's off by? Or is it off by more and reducing then?
So I'm not sure the exact dollar value, but he said that the basically like sixteen thousand is the surplus here, and he needs sixteen thousand to get um the other project done. But again, he'll probably be here on Monday night and he can speak to that project better than I can. Um, the transfers to the bonded projects, so for the bonded projects, anytime we bond for a project and there's money left over, that bonded money has to go to another approved bonded project. So we cannot put the money into reserves, we cannot put the money into um an un- a project that was not approved for bonding. So these projects, um particularly this Henry James renovation phase three, this is a project closeout that we have been waiting for for years. Um, the state of Connecticut was behind about seven years on closing out their um their audit projects. So we were able to get the Henry James finally closed out. There was a three point three million dollar return. And since those were bonded funds, they have to go back into bonded projects. The good news is, related to this, is all of these projects can be put towards the fiscal year twenty six projects that we bonded. So just a um, a quick refresher, we bond every other year. So fiscal year twenty six projects and fiscal year twenty seven projects will be bonded in twenty twenty seven. So all of those projects, I think it was about three million something for fiscal year twenty six, we no longer have to bond for because we already have bond funds available from all of these project closeout. So that's going to reduce our debt service. Since it was only about three million something, I believe it's, we have about one point four million in bonded funds that we can use towards our fiscal year twenty seven budget. So in fiscal year twenty seven, when we approve projects for bonding, we're still going to go through the same um process to get those projects approved for bonding. But we already have the money available. So again, that reduces our debt service going forward. So some good news there.
Can you just explain why does it transfer to paving?
Uh, it doesn't.
Like that amount.
That's just a, that, that's just typo.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's a lot of roads for Tom.
That was, that was for last year, sorry. That's where we transferred it last.
Nice drive, Tom. We tried our best there. Wendy.
Tried to help you. Um, and then lastly, down here, we have our transfers to and from the capital reserve. So anything that was funded via capital reserve or anything that had a cash funding source just automatically goes back to the capital reserve fund. So up here, you'll see the general fund transfer of the two point eight that we want to put into capital reserve. Um, the private duty fund, um, which is its own fund, we collect the revenue from our private duty jobs. We charge the salaries of the police officers and the overtime that they're doing to that fund. And at the end of the year, if we have a surplus, that surplus is transferred into the capital reserve fund. This is something that was set up years back by the board.
I have a question about that, though. So, I I'm sorry, um, because every time we, you know, every year when we're looking at our budget and we're looking at our operating expenses, there's always um that overtime expense for the officers that is a bit upside down. And I mean, certainly, I don't feel that this uh private duty fund amount, from what I can recall, is not covering that upside down amount that we generally have in that overtime. And we understand overtime is something that uh is hard to budget for because you you don't know how mu- how much you're going to accrue um i- in the overtime. Uh, so how does this reconcile between this private duty fund transfer and the overtime expenses that we have um during the operating?
So it doesn't. So the um, the general fund overtime is for actual overtime of people being out or um maybe changing of shifts, things of that nature. The private duty fund overtime is taken out of the general fund completely. So you don't even see it in the general fund. So when we do the private duty, we'll have an invoice, say, for two thousand dollars for police services. That's going to go into the private duty fund. And then the officer's time and a portion of their vehicle expense related to the the um the service that they're providing is going to go into the private duty fund as well. So then you have your revenue coming in at that two thousand, you have whatever the officer expenses are, and then that's your net surplus or net gain to the private duty fund. So this has actually nothing to do with the overtime of being charged to the general fund.
Got it. Thank you. And for the public, so we're clear, these are uh like private events that our officers are for that outside agencies pay um for their time and services. Got it. Thank you.
Right. And also things like Eversource and Roadwork, uh, you know, all of that, where where the officer is using the vehicle, Amy's right. So we also capture a piece of that vehicle usage. Um, this is an interesting line because you would never want to see anything other than a surplus there. Um, the chief and I talk about this in every budget cycle, is, you know, do we need to increase the private duty um charges to our partners and so forth. So you don't want to see a lot of money here, but you always want to see a surplus. Thanks, Amy.
Um, so then just going down, these are just your project closeouts that we ever paid for via cash or the five-year payback. And again, they just get closed out to the capital reserve fund. So then taking all of the project closeouts and then your transfer related to the general fund and the private duty, you get to your total transfer to the capital reserve fund of about three million dollars. Um, and then this down here will break down to you, your capital reserve fund and where you all have um starting for the budget. So our capital reserve fund as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, had about six point eight million dollars in it. We're going to add that three million that we just went through to the balance. And then since we're already done with the fiscal year twenty six budget, we know it's going to be coming out of the fund um in fiscal year twenty six. So then that leaves us the balance in the fund of about six point four million. If you take on that six point four million, there are some things in this fund that um are assigned for specific purposes that can only be used for those purposes. So we had a bond premium back in fiscal year nineteen. We take that amortization of that bond premium, and each year we give a little bit to the general fund to pay off that part of the debt service. So that was for fiscal year nineteen and fiscal year twenty. We had some funds for the senior center, the Geller funds, um about thirty thousand dollars that we were holding. I believe the use of these funds is specific to a new senior center. So those funds will be held until they have a purpose for which they could be spent. And then we also have a holding place for our liquor surcharge fund. Um, so once upon a time, um when these funds came out, I think it was, we were going to build up these funds for a piece of equipment going forward to utilize these funds. But again, that can be explored during the budget process. But the liquor surcharge funds do have um specific use related to how they can be spent. So that's fifty eight thousand of that specific restricted use. Um, the Board of Finance came up with a debt plan to smooth out debt service over the next few years. So up here, you'll see fiscal year twenty six, we're using one point three million. And then in fiscal years twenty six through twenty eight, we're using um another million dollars. So those things are assigned for specific purposes. The remainder of that six point four um million dollar balance, after you take out all of these assigned uses, is um about five million. And then that is what you all will be able to utilize um during your fiscal year twenty seven budget conversation um for capital improvements, C N R, um whatever the board decides to use that money for. So that unassigned balance is um is completely unrestricted for the use of the board going into the fiscal year twenty seven budget process. And that is all I have. Happy to answer any question.
Chair, I have a couple of things if I could ask Amy to to drill back on for just a minute with your permission.
Sure.
Great. So uh Amy, just on that one million uh for the debt smoothing plan, if we could just look at that for one second. I just want to draw the board's attention to the fact, as Amy said, this is the twenty sixth through twenty eight, so it was one point three, now down to a million. And Amy, correct me, but that stays at a million for the next couple of years and then it's gone. Is that right?
Um, so fiscal year twenty six, we're using one point three million, which is already above. And then the million, I believe, for fiscal year twenty seven, we're using about eight hundred thousand and two hundred thousand. And fiscal year twenty, and then we're at a point in debt service where we don't have the spike anymore, and we will not be utilizing that anymore.
Right. So just wanted to draw the board's attention to the phase out of that. It was a wonderful plan that Amy and the the Board of Finance uh helped us smooth that, but it does drop off, which I think is important. And then number two, Amy, if you could just roll back to employee benefits in the general fund. Um, the the note I had was about a half a million. I I think you went through it fast, but if you could just speak to the employee benefits uh result as the end of the fiscal year, was it a half a million to the good?
Yeah, so it was five hundred thousand to the good. It was about four hundred and twenty four thousand related to staffing vacancies, eighty three thousand related to social security. And then um we had savings in our retiree benefits for Anthem. So our retiree health insurance was through Anthem. We were paying about twenty five thousand a month. And then um during the year, we transferred over to retiree first. And then now we're only paying seventeen thousand a month. So we were able, because of that transfer, we were able to utilize or to gain good savings from that line item.
Great. And I know that Personnel Sub and uh our partners there, we do report on the vacancies and open positions. As Wendy alluded to earlier, that's coming up next week or at Personnel Sub. But you know, the contribution here of a half a million to the good obviously contributes to the three point something surplus. Any idea uh how much of that we could attribute to the board side and how much we could attribute to the town side generally?
So what was presented tonight is all of the town side, or today, I'm sorry.
Just all the town side, right?
That was all the town side. The board has a separate.
Right. So just wanted to to close by by mentioning that, you know, the town has had uh a a process by which each year as part of the budget cycle, we budget something called the vacancy factor. Uh, it's really what I call a contra expense account. And you'll be hearing a little bit more about that from me as we move into the budget process. So I just want you to put, if you could, uh, put a pin in this uh for future discussion. And then thanks very much, Amy. Again, great job. Thank you, Chair.
Thank, you're welcome. Uh, Amy, I have a question. Um, is the liquor surcharge funds the NIPS money?
Yes.
Okay, because we've talked about potential uses for that that we could explore next, next term. And then how our our capital reserve balance, like how does that re- compare to past years? And um just if if there's any context around that for us.
Um, so it's building up every year. Last year, I think we had an unassigned going into the budget of four million. So we're, we're definitely higher um this year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's more, that's a great budget discussion for, you know, when we get into fiscal year twenty seven and where do we want that number? And how do we want to utilize those funds? Do we want it to be built up to a certain dollar value and start saving for future projects? Do we want to utilize that money for C N R? Um, some good budget discussion to be had with it, but no set plans right now.
Okay. Um, so if you're all set, if if anybody has any further questions, I'm going to go to the motions. The other question I have on the motions, Amy, considering, I'm just only picking out the three eighty eight. Um, you know, if we if we say as presented, and I know it it did it as assigned, but later it says reserves, should, should we leave that to the Board of Finance, given um it's kind of their potential decision that they would change, they could change how we do it anyway?
Um, yeah, you don't have to approve the assigned and unassigned. You're really just approving the transfers, the Board of Finance. I'll approve the assigned and the unassigned when they um, when they do their closeout.
Okay. All right. So I'm going to ask for the three motions here. Um, to move effective November seventh, to approve the general fund closeout transfer request as presented and rec- recommend said transfers to the Board of Finance. Move effective November seventh, twenty twenty five, to approve the general fund year end budget transfers between departments as presented and recommend said transfers to the Board of Finance. And move effective November seventh, twenty twenty five, to approve the capital transfer requests as presented and recommend said transfers to the Board of Finance.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Is that six? Guess it's six. Okay. All right. So now let's move on to the Sugarloaf Cut Supplemental Appropriation. Um, we have Tom Roy here.
Wendy, ju- yeah, for clarification, I don't know if Kevin voted because he's on mute and blanked out.
Okay, Kevin. So or is it a five, five, nothing vote then?
I don't know what procedure is. I just figured, you know, before a technicality presents itself.
Well, it's, yeah, he didn't vote no or in favor, but he's not present. So what do we do, Tom? Just a five, nothing?
He's present, he's just, he's on mute.
Yeah, we know.
We can just send the voteless five and list the five of you and then.
And he abstained. I mean, because.
Abstained or just marked present.
Okay. All right, let's move on.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Steve, for pointing that out. Um, the supplemental appropriation for fifteen Sugarloaf Cut. So I'm going to let Tom speak to that, but it did, it was sort of approved at the Board of Finance. Um, there was a discussion with a lot of questions asked that some of them were questions that we would ask. So if you want to bring those back up publicly, that's great. And there was some questions asked in advance by the Board of Finance Chair that's also in the packet. Um, but Tom, I'll turn it over to you and then people can ask questions or go over, you know, some of the items in the questions that were already asked.
Sure. Um, so fifteen Sugarlo- Loaf Cut, Su- Sugarloaf Cut is that little piece of roadway at the end of uh West Mountain just before it hits uh three oh nine. Uh, the town was deeded or gifted a um home with twenty two acres to be used either for housing or recreational purposes many, many years ago. I didn't look up the deed. Uh, we've been using the home for low income housing. It's one of six units that the town owns and operates. Um, we recently had an unexpected vacancy. We have not put any money in the house in in quite a long time. It's very dated and um working through our property manager, we have the ability to um replace the roof. It's certainly needed. Um, exterior painting, replacing some rotted clapboard. It still has wood cedar um fascia boards, reinstall the gutters, um, replace the shutters on the front of the building, um buildings from the eighteen hundreds. Um, interior renovation in the kitchen, renovate both bathrooms, install vinyl uh flooring throughout. Um, interior painting, replacing a number of doors, old light fixtures. Uh, again, this is really, just trying to bring this up to something that um we would, we would be proud of for um something we could present to a low-income family. Um, and replacing, you know, you don't even think about it, but we need to replace the smoke detectors and the CO systems and all of these little things. Um, so it is, it is a big number. It it also does carry a s- a little bit of contingency in there above the contractor's estimate. Um, but it's an old house and as we get into it, I'm sure we'll uh, there's the risk of finding either rotted wood or deteriorating this or broken that, so.
I have a question.
Sure.
Why wouldn't we consider selling all of these properties? It just seems like there's more risk and when you consider the maintenance. Uh, it's all in the stated, correct?
Yeah, I think it's because it was deeded. The two choices on this would be um.
Yeah, I think it's because it was deeded. The two choices on this would be to revert it back to use in some sort of park and recreation fund. Right now, the majority of this land is used as open space and for hiking. It's right on the backside of the mountain.
I'm kind of talking about all six properties. I just don't see the benefit of a municipality being landlords.
I, I, I'm gonna pick that one maybe to mark and say it's really more of a policy decision, but it's certainly something we could go back, look at the deeds, see if the deeds on which buildings would allow us.
Yeah, and I appreciate the opportunity just to clarify for the board and, and correct me if I'm wrong. But you know, these aren't individual parcels where, you know, it's all connected to the land, which as you say, has been used as open space and so forth. So when we do the leases, I, I, I've signed a couple of these, Tom, where I think we've made it very clear that the tenant doesn't actually have access to the unrestricted ownership or whatever of the, of the land. Do I have that right?
Yeah, with the, the tenant for this unit has, you know, rights to the area around the house and in the yard proper, but they certainly don't have full and exclusive use of the twenty two acres.
Right. So it almost would be Heather, like we, we would need to do a subdivision and, and do the lot line adjustments and carve, carve out the, the property. So there'd be a bunch of work there. But I think that Tom is saying the deed restriction would prevent us from, from doing that. So we have limited options. I, I think that's what we're saying.
I think the other thing just to look at, so there's, there's basically three groups of these of, of the six housing. There's this unit that's completely standalone. There's three units up at the farms adjacent to the Apple Barn. And there's two units up at the community farm in a duplex.
There's another component too. First of all, I, I love what Heather's, where Heather's going. I think it's something we need to deal with eventually. The town or state owns a significant amount of the town, which is great. But if there's already a single family house, that being said, a component that wasn't mentioned but is relevant is we only get credit for affordable housing if we own it. So you know, that's something we're, we're fighting with right now is as we all know, eight thirty one G. We're subject to the state laws and right now might not be the best time, but I am totally on board with Heather's idea that we need to look at all the land we use and, you know, not be a landlord if we don't have to be. But the affordable component is a real concern right now.
And, and to that end, a number of years ago, we, we went from managing these as the town to putting ourselves at an arms length relationship with the actual tenants through the use of a property management firm, and that has significantly improved the operation of these units.
Is it possible to do, like if you're gonna, if you're gonna own a business that has housing and you have income that comes in, you have expenses, can we, do we take the lease revenue and keep it separate to see how much money we're losing on this? Or like, is there a balance sheet for this?
There's a balance sheet and I think we're somewhere around five fifty. If Amy could help me out on that one.
Yeah, I saw that in there.
There's a separate fund and, and yeah, we do keep that separate. I think also just to share with the board that, that this is something that we might discuss with our partners at the Housing Authority as well as, you know, a part of a broader plan with respect to, you know, what the town wants to do with these. I think, you know, is it Imagineers that we're using now, Tom? Is that right? Yes, that's a, a super, a super management, a property management company that's done a good job there. But Heather's point is, is an important one and, and how it fit, fits into the overall affordable housing as Stephen is, is talking about is very important too.
Yeah, I was gonna.
If we have like, if we have income and we have expenses, can't we, just why does it have to be a, a board decision? Couldn't this be like it's run, if we're running it as a separate kind of company? If we're, if we're gonna actually have to do this, take the revenues, we have revenues, we keep them there. And then as expenses come in, we take them off of that instead of having this be a board or the.
You would still need Curtis the, the appropriation. So at the end of the day, you know, what, whatever fund it is, this board, you know, and is responsible for all expenses. So the town can't spend any money without board appropriation. And then that goes for this, even if we put the money in separate funds like the sewer use fund or you, you, you know, the numerous funds that the town employs. So. But I, but I do understand. We've got a, a positive fund balance. You know, it's, we're not making any money over there. I'm glad we've got the fund balance that we have when these types of charges come up. I think I'd be a little concerned as to, you know, are we, are we looking at the need time to put this much money into the other units? Or do you think this is the, the one of the multiple properties there? Is this the worst one in terms of the need? Or are we likely to be back to the board for other work on the others is, is kind of my question.
I, I think we're gonna be back to the board with work on the other units as part of the regular budget cycle. The, the one place that, you know, again, it's when do you do, when do you, when do you make some of these big repairs? And when they're occupied, it certainly is challenging and we end up doing a lot more, you know. The water heater broke, we replaced the water heater. But something like this and it's vacant now is really the opportunity to take advantage and get this done. You know, we've done some, you know, we'll do some painting and things periodically, some chimney work, roof work. But while the building is empty, it's really the opportunity to, you know, get it up to a modern standard.
Understood.
So I was gonna just, once I was trying to get a word in here, but I couldn't. So the, the affordable housing point, these all came up at the Board of Finance who kind of pre-approved this. And one of the points was that, you know, to sell the properties and the fact that it does contribute to our affordable housing quotas or, you know, percentage, you know, was a, was a plus. The other question that came up was of the rents, if we, I think Amy answered this for maybe Mike Doyle or for Art. Are we coming out in the black with the rent over the costs? And I think the answer to that was also yes. So we're not losing money by renting them out. And then the, the sales conversation, I'm not sure if anybody has anywhere, I would assume we do. What, what is the market value of all these properties? Is that something that we have captured somewhere?
No, not, not yet. We can certainly look at that again. It would require lot line adjustments and, you know, really working with our town attorney, I think, to get, you know, because you have to survey these individually. Yeah.
But I guess the, the point is if, if this is gonna come back at some point for more money, you know, we look at this and, and as a whole, as a policy decision, what to do going forward. Also, do the rents, I assume the rents go into the residential rental property fund too? So it all, it all kind of felt funds itself somehow? Okay. All right. So I'm going to ask for a motion effective November seventh, twenty twenty five, to approve a supplemental appropriation for the fifteen Sugarloaf Cut Rehab, Rehab Project in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars via the residential rental property reserves. Is that Diana? Sucking anybody?
Yeah, I will.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Is that everyone?
Yes. And for the minutes, I had to leave the meeting unfortunately, and I apologize to my colleagues at approximately eleven AM and returned at eleven oh nine.
Yeah, we, we have a vote without you. So we, we recorded that.
I apologize. Thank you.
So the next item is the, on the Performing Arts Center. Again, I'm gonna let Tom provide all the context on this regarding the, the need to add additional funds. And then that requires, it goes over what the referendum was, the twenty seven eighty two, eight eighty one. And it will have to go back to referendum. And the reason why we're doing it now, rather than next May, which would delay the whole project. So Tom, do you want to go through this? Is that, is that on you?
Sure, sure. Definitely, definitely a tricky one. So I think we're, we're all very committed to the Performing Arts Center project. And, you know, kinds of in terms of history, the Performing Arts Center hired a design team kind of on their own dime back before they were assured this would be going forward or not. That they were working on a tight budget and they put together a bid package for, for us. The town then took over the project. We had cost estimates at the time. We knew that we were gonna be tight just on the fact of the project would, you know, our cost estimates were for a year sooner. So when this came to the board back in July of this year, we, we had a tough project at that point. We had about six percent contingency between our allocated funds for both the construction administration and the contractor to get the work done. We ran into a couple of challenges as, as any of these projects can, can have with unsuitable soils that were behind the, the existing building where we were gonna build our new building, some utility relocation work. And then there was a challenge associated with the fire protection for the building. The firm that did the work had interpreted the code as to allow them to avoid using fire sprinklers based upon the overall size of the building and the use. When this went to our fire marshal for review, his interpretation of the code is very clear. And he expected either complete fire separation between the new structure and the old or fire sprinklers. We carried fifty thousand dollars in the bid value to do fire separation between the two buildings. And when we got our estimates back from the contractor, it was closer to two hundred thousand. Which at that point, the right answer is to go with the sprinklers. It's better for the building in long term, so on and so forth. With the unsuitable soils, with the utility relocation, with the fire sprinklers, we were, were looking at a matter of just a few thousand dollars remaining in contingency. And it's just not advisable to go forward with the project at that level. If we are able to go through the referendum process at the three eighty eight or four hundred, whatever number we settle on, it allows us the comfort that if there are any more unknowns, which inevitably happens during any construction project. And our goal that we are, you know, foot on the gas is to be done June thirtieth of twenty twenty six in time for the twenty twenty six season down at the Performing Arts Center. I don't know, Mark, if you want to add anything or Jeff?
Well, I can't suspend the rules. Only the chair can let Jeff. And, and also just for the record, Ally is, is here. Their executive director has, has joined me in my office and is here to, to comment as well if the chair so desires. I'll just add that, just for, for, for context, it is very important that our, our colleagues on the board and, and certainly the public that voted for this overwhelmingly at referendum understand that the, the Performing Arts Center was the party that went out, got the initial designs done. This was not something that the town engineers and Tom Roy put out from the very beginning. This has been a partnership between the town of Simsbury and the Performing Arts Center. And that's why this project now is kind of feeling that it, 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 it is. And we're not pointing any fingers, but there were different components of this. And so when the original design firm got, got involved in this, not everything was communicated. At the end of the day, and the first selectman and I have had a couple of conversations about this. We're not taking a position and we're not asking the board to take a position that the fire suppression system is, is something that needs to be value engineered. It, it's a component that's obviously critical. And I want to commend Tom and, and Adam and who worked on this. They made the decision from the very beginning that the separation of the building should now be converted to the sprinklers. And that, that's the key thing here. So we're getting a better and safer building for the use of the public that, that, that we hope to be there. So that's the number one thing. The second thing, Chair, this is very important. I have not had conversations with the Performing Arts Center about any contribution towards this overage yet. We're simply asking that the board at this point approve the appropriation because you would need to do that even if we went back to the state and somehow convinced them to increase their nine hundred thousand, right? So I just want to be sure that I've clearly informed the board that conversations can still occur. They will still occur. This is simply the same appropriation that we would need to do, even if we suddenly got another grant, right? So we're still working. Before this gets back to the Board of Finance for approval, we will have concluded those conversations. So this is also why it was important that I wanted to be here for this part of the meeting. Chair, and again, I appreciate you having it on, on Friday at this hour. And, and I'm happy to answer any questions. And as I said, Jeff is here from their Board of Directors and so is Ally. If the board has any questions that Tom and I cannot answer. Last thing is, in conversations with the Chair of the Board of Finance, Chair Hevner suggested that we just round this to four hundred. The three eighty eight was really the effort of the team to, to, to not ask for a nickel more than was needed. And, and part of that three eighty eight, by the way, is obviously replenishing the contingency. So we're here to ask for a four hundred rather than three eighty eight on the advice of the Board of Finance Chair. Thank you.
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. If we leave it at three eighty eight, which is what was presented to us, can the Board of Finance bump it to four hundred if they so choose?
I'll defer to Wendy on that. That's a great question.
No, you all have to make the recommendation and then they do the approval, but it has to be recommended by the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. So Tom, are you comfortable with the three eighty eight?
I, I think we're, we're comfortable with the three eighty eight. And, and you know, I, I just want to be clear, just as I can on this. We, we take this very seriously. We take the value of, of, of the funds very seriously. And if we can keep costs down at any point in this project, we are going to. And if we go in with four hundred and we return back triple digits, I'll, I'll be happy to do that. You know, we, we certainly don't want to go bumping up against this number. At the same time, we certainly don't want to, very, very frustrating to be back to have to take a second bite at a referendum, but that's where we are in the project. So.
Okay. A couple of other questions. So this, if, if we approve it, it goes back to the Board of Finance. They have to have a public hearing. So the public gets to weigh in again on this project. At that point, i- is there somewhere where we'll see more of a detailed breakdown of what would be included in that three eighty eight?
We, we can provide detail to you. Certainly, it's.
I'm thinking for the hearing, right, with, when it goes to the Board of Finance and a, and a hearing.
Jumping in here for Tom, I think part of the three eighty eight, of course, is, is contingency. So it's, it is.
Oh, right, right.
Not identified. I think about half of it or maybe a little more than half. I don't have that spreadsheet up, but. So we can't break that down, but the point is, we, we need it.
In, 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 in broad, broad brush strokes, it's, there's still, we eliminated most of the unsuitable materials with town resources. But there's still the portion of unsuitable materials and utility relocation that was not accounted for in the original bid documents that needs to be accounted for, which is part of that three eighty eight. It's the fire service that we need to bring in. We are looking to add a fire hydrant. If we're gonna be doing this work and bringing in fire sprinklers, it, it just makes sense for public safety to bring in a fire hydrant. One of the things the Fire Marshal brought up was a concern of, one, the fact that we use fireworks down there frequently. And two, if there was ever any kind of car fire or anything else at, as a concert was ending, they can't get a fire truck in in time. And, you know, this is the way he thinks. It's the way he thinks for public safety and it would certainly be a smart add. The other thing is we had value it engineered out some things that really, it, it'd be tough to have a building of this importance with brand new siding and the existing structure to have old siding. So those are the small adds that we would bring back in. Some of the things we valued engineered out were, were truly value engineering where we got rid of the standing seam metal roof for an asphalt roof and it saves significant money. The long-term plan on that project is to have solar panels on top of the roof. So why have an expensive roof underneath solar panels?
Okay. Just so now, there's, there's a lot of chat going on. I don't think it's between us. I, I, we can't really acknowledge chat in a, in a public meeting because we don't really take into consideration comments. So I just wanted to point that out. And, you know, maybe if we do Zoom going forward, I don't know if we, we don't usually use that because we're chatting live here. So just wanted to point that out. So I'm gonna go back to the motion.
Discussion. I have one more thing. Does this trigger a referent? Is this going to referendum or is just going to B O F them back to us?
Referendum.
All right. That, that means.
So the public will weigh in, right?
Sounds great.
So the public gets to weigh in again and, anyway. And the other question, Amy, I wanted, the, the motion says to further recommend to fund it from reserves. But can we leave that to the Board of Finance? Because we've already assigned, potentially assigned the three eighty eight or the reserves. What do you think on that front?
Yeah, you can leave that up to the discretion of the Board of Finance and researchers, the funding source.
Is there a, like you said before, that doesn't necessarily matter, Mark? Anybody have any strong feelings about that?
I have no, no preference. Obviously defer to you and to the Board of Finance. Sure.
Okay. All right. So I'm gonna ask for a motion effective November seventh, twenty twenty five, to approve and recommend an additional appropriation of three hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars for the Simsbury Performing Arts Center Banshell Expansion Next Act Project.
So moved.
Is there further discussion?
I do have a question on, on process. So we're also standing by for.
I do have a question on on process, so we're um also standing by for additional um, you know, information, and there'll be a public hearing, and then the Board of Finance has the um uh, the responsibility to to act. Knowing that we're recommending it to them based on the information that we have here, is there anything in the process that allows us to roll back the clock and withdraw our recommendation if something uh comes up or change our recommendation if something comes up that uh substantively alters our understanding at this time?
Uh, I'll I'll do my best on that. I think if the board uh had had uh was deciding in the negative, you you could change it, but uh both both staff and and obviously the contractors and and the Board of Finance itself, I think has to be able to rely on on your affirmative vote today if that's ultimately the decision. So I've got to say no, I don't think that there would be a time to to come back. Now, with that said, the Board of Finance uh obviously has the authority to to table the matter pending additional information, and they could choose to send it back to you for further discussion, but I'm going to answer no. I think the vote that the board takes today is the vote is the vote that that holds uh holds sway with this, and uh I defer to to uh Amy on it, but I think that's the correct answer.
I think it's difficult to make this appropriation when we're missing a lot of the details here.
Well, to that point, I I I think, you know, respectfully, the 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 bulk of the ask is to to keep the contingency ahead of what is uh been been long identified as the safety level, right? So our our town engineer has said, you know, typically projects don't proceed without a percent of contingency, and this one has been, you know, hovering at at unsafe unsafe contingency levels from the beginning. I think that the fact that they value engineered so much out is really just a testament to the fact that that on the staff side, Heather, we've done everything we can to make sure that this project does not go over the the referendum number. And uh, and now that it has, I can certainly say uh for the record, you know, our team did everything they could. Tom Roy just just mentioned it. In fact, it was our staff that that did some work uh on the town side uh uh with respect to the unsuitable soils, and uh, you know, I want to thank DPW for being over there and doing some of that test digging to identify this problem earlier in the process. Um, and then lastly, we're fighting a deadline because of the 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 country's two fiftieth, the Fourth of July, you know, the the opening of the season there. Um, if if this is approved, um, the only thing that we didn't mention earlier was the referendum would be sometime the end of January. Uh, Chair, I it we we are pretty sure it would be the twenty-fourth, I believe, of January, so the public would get to weigh in. Uh, and that timeline finally allows us to to meet the June thirtieth deadline that's very tight. So we we ask for quick support from this board so we can move on to the Board of Finance. Thank you, Chair.
Okay.
Part of the recommendation and appropriation from Capital Reserves, and um is there, is there a non-taxpayer uh funding source that will meet this gap?
Uh, I'll do my best on that one. Again, tough questions from the board, which which we we greatly appreciate. It's my opinion, and I can't speak for the PAC. Uh, I've not had those discussions with them yet, but but they are our partner here. Uh, this this cost increase uh is obviously partly related to things that uh we we could not know, and they could not know. Uh, and as I mentioned earlier, Kevin, we're going to have those conversations with the PAC about um any further contribution that they could make relative to the original commitment. Uh, this project was funded with a state grant uh with town money uh to prior appropriations of, as you know, and also uh about a million dollars that was raised by the PAC. Um, so I I will have those conversations with them. Uh, I think that 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 the PAC should bear some responsibility for that, and uh, like I said, we we'll get back to the decision makers on what that is, but either way, we would need the appropriation.
If this project uh is not able to proceed, or at least not able to get occupancy because the sprinklers are uh still in progress, would the uh Performing Arts Center be able to open without the uh the Next Act Project being completed and still be able to use it for the twenty twenty-six uh season and the two fiftieth uh celebration? What I would be hearing is, what my understanding would be, is that it, some of it could be cleaned up during that time if this was the the stopgap, and you'd be able to use it in some sort of other capacity, but it wouldn't be the best case scenario. Is is that your understanding that it would be able to at least be used during that time while the funding in the sprinkler system is able to be completed when the funding is available through uh contributions or grants, et cetera?
Do you want to take that? Yeah, sure. Um, the sprinklers right now are not the critical path. The critical path is actually uh the structural steel, which is on order um to getting it done. So the sprinklers are not a timing issue. The timing issue was making the determination of whether to go with the sprinklers or whether it was to go with the fire separated structure. Um, unfortunately, that process of back and forth cost us about a month of schedule, so instead of being done first of May or middle of May, we're looking to be done end of June, and um the fire sprinklers will be installed um throughout the project, and one of the things that we are carrying for some additional contingency is winter conditions, because we had a late start. If the contractor now needs to bring in heating and supplemental equipment like that, that's where we could incur costs, and that's part of that three eighty-eight.
I have one final question if if others would allow me. Um, uh, knowing that Tuesday is Veterans Day and a holiday, but we do have a meeting scheduled for Monday. Is there anything significant that would happen if a board vote didn't happen today, but instead happened at the end of the day on Monday, and something could uh then happen on staff, staff-wise on Wednesday morning following a an affirmative vote if that that's if that were the case? In other words, could we table this for today, continue to gather additional information and additional public comment at a meeting on Monday, and then take action with the appropriate amount of time?
Well, I I, the motion's already out there, and I'm about to call a vote on it, so.
Well, so my my question still stands. If if there's something that needs to happen before close of business today, or something could happen first thing in the morning on on Wednesday, and that might influence my vote.
Chair, Chair, would you like me to answer that, or do you?
Yeah, yeah, because, yeah.
So again, uh, uh, challenging questions. I think the 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 time is of the essence is is, as Tom said, days matter here. We are out on a limb a little bit on this June thirtieth, and I and I don't want to speak for Tom, but but this is, it's it's been a challenging, uh, it's tight. Days matter, I I think, and and with respect to the additional information and the public ability to to weigh in, I just draw the board's attention to the fact that there is going to be a public hearing scheduled by our Board of Finance. So that's the first thing before it ever gets to referendum. It then comes back to this board for you to set the referendum date and then clarify the referendum question. There'd be another opportunity for public comment uh at that Board of Selectmen meeting, so I would respectfully request a favorable action by the board today because I do think that time matters, and the public is going to have uh the ability finally coming to weigh in at referendum as well. Um, so given all of that public comment ahead of us, um, I'd like to see if we could get this moving today if possible.
I'm very much looking forward to that. My my fiduciary responsibility is based on the information that I have available to me at this time. Um, and once I make the affirmative vote um to push this forward, that lays in a lot of other actions that I will then be required to um uh to put forward. So if the Board of Finance finalizes their recommendation, it would be irresponsible for me to not schedule uh the public hearing. So every other vote that I will take after this doesn't allow me to give comment unless it's a something, you know, about the nature and timing of it that doesn't allow it to to proceed. So even though we will uh allow the Board of Finance to be able to receive a public comment, I think it would be helpful for this board to receive um uh favorable comment from members of the PAC or other users of the PAC on why this is critical and this additional support or other ways that um donors to the PAC would be willing to fund at least part of it. Um, and then those who are in opposition to be able to get their moment before this board moves forward. And so um when, if the others have other uh comments, I don't want to continue to uh take the floor, but I I may have another motion before we proceed.
I agree, Kevin.
I.
Question. I might have. I'm sorry. We're still. Uh, mine's just, um, I just for clarification, and I think also it the public probably doesn't know this as well, because I don't think I fully fully understand this part of it. Um, if we go to referendum and it's it gets shot down, what is the the next step in that process? Just just for clarification process, just the project still move forward, or um what are the risks of going to referendum?
Get shot down.
It 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 could be shot down, right? You know, the project costs are, right, so to that, that's that would be a uh an unfortunate outcome.
But it has to go to referendum, which allows everyone to speak. I mean, that's the ultimate in transparency is referendum.
Yep, exactly.
So, and also just for clarification, I I think I asked this at the outset. It goes to BOF, they have public hearings, then it comes back to us before the referendum. So we actually do have another um opportunity. There was an implication that we could not reverse our approval, if you will, or it our implication of an approval, but we could, if I'm not mistaken, or please educate me on why we would not have the opportunity to deny it at that juncture.
Yeah, I I I would disagree on that point, Stephen, only because uh the requirement uh in in our in performing our duties, our duties at that point is to make sure that uh the process continues and to appropriately schedule the date. If somebody were to say, and staff were to present to us a date that would not be possible uh for a for a referendum to take place, then that would be our ability to say, no, this this date works better for the public for whatever reason. Uh, so that's our comment at that point, and if you wanted to vote no on it, it would be because you disagreed that it was the appropriate date. It would be inappropriate for us because we did um did not support the project overall to to vote no on on that. At least that's how I interpret my my job and what the statute requires for us in performance of our duties. If a board were to not take action, for instance, if all of us decided that we didn't want to proceed on this project after it had been recommended um by the Board of Finance, a court could require us under a writ of mandamus to take action and schedule the referendum. So that's why my interpretation is that my vote, either at this meeting or the meeting on Monday, is my affirmative vote in saying that this is a good recommendation uh to the Board of Finance.
I I, first of all, I appreciate your insight. I never stop learning, and a lot of the time it's you, Kevin, so I'll give you kudos where it's deserved. Um, that being said, it's going to public comment and then to public referendum, and I think it would be more transparent to let the public speak than to hinder it at this juncture, but that's, of course, just my one perspective. Um, but I do appreciate that follow-up and education on the different steps because it makes sense to me now.
So I I'm ready to call the vote. Kevin, you indicated you might want to make an additional amendment here?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I'd like to make a motion to table um this vote until the next um Board of Selectmen meeting, um, which we have currently scheduled for Monday, the tenth.
Okay, so I want to clarify this because we've had this happen before. If we do not vote to table, does the original motion stand as a yes?
I would say that it does, yes.
Okay.
Yes, it does. So we, the motion now to table needs to be seconded, and then we vote on whether we're tabling it or not. But if it fails, then it goes back to the original motion.
It's passing, correct?
That is passing. We have to vote on that motion then.
Okay, so um the motion to table is out there. All those in favor to table say aye.
You need a second.
So who's going to second that?
I'll second.
Okay. Any more discussion?
I, the reason why I'm making this motion is I I would like for two things. I'd like to get just a little bit more information on some of the questions we just had, including some of the uh costs in the project and why that amount, and why not the four hundred that the Board of Finance said, and and et cetera, as well as what we've already just heard is a question about whether or not the public is going to get a voice. And even though the public will also be able to talk to the Board of Finance, I'm hoping to be able to hear from the public so I can inform my decision, and that was the reason why I made the motion. That's all for me.
Okay, a- all those in favor to table say aye. All those against? There's two in favor, there's four against. So the motion is not tabled. I'm gonna make the motion again, effective November seventh, twenty twenty-five. I don't, do I have to re, I'll reread it, to approve and recommend an additional appropriation of three eighty-eight for the Simsbury Performing Arts Center Bandshell Expansion Next Act. It was approved and seconded before. Do we need to do that again? Okay, so all those in favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
That's four. All those against?
I vote no. Um, I'd like to explain my vote.
Okay, and then um, so that will pass four to two? Um, sure, Kevin?
So I, the only reason why I regret that I had to vote no today, it's only because of the reasons that I stated earlier. Um, I like this project. I think it's going to be an excellent um uh future for the use of that space, um, you know, down at the Meadows. But I do think that it's important that we get the feedback from the public on this. I look forward to continuing that um uh that process and hearing from um from the public, and maybe we can continue to get updates on sources of funding. We did not make a recommendation on the source of funding for this, whether it's from Capital Reserves, et cetera, and so that's also why I voted no, um, not knowing how we would be able to fund it. That's all for me. Thank you for the opportunity.
Yes, I agree. Had this not been a Zoom call at ten AM. Um, you know, I am in support of the project as well, but I agree with Kevin that one, we need more information on um the funding source and um from hearing from the public.
Yeah, I I will just add that um we will get the identifiers of the the pieces that make up the three eighty-eight as we requested. And I feel like we've come so far on this project over four-plus years. Um, it now is kind of a three-way split of the funding. We are a little over, but we have the state funding, we have the PAC donation funding, and we have the town funding, and it is a three-way partnership to make this happen. Um, so I'd like to just move on from here, if that's okay with everybody, to get through this meeting and get to the next agenda item. Okay?
Yeah, I have nothing to say. I was not able to give him the opportunity to speak about, but I'll go at another time.
Go ahead, Diana.
Well, I I just, um, I I was trying to point out before the vote, I mean, it doesn't matter now, but that, you know, if if this project got delayed even further, even trying to wait until May, we seen escalating costs, and um, we would have uh additional costs later. I also wanted to have the opportunity to break out the amount for the hydrant, and that is being requested, and that may wind up being requested whether this project moves forward or not. I mean, I don't see how this project cannot move forward at this point, but I I just wanted to clarify on that hydrant cost and what is being required from the Fire Marshal, which may be required uh regardless of this project now that it has been brought to light. Um, you know, with the usage of fields a- and everything that is being done at the Meadows, if a- and uh, project or no project, if there's going to continue to have concerts there, that that cost, we would still need to incur at some point, so.
We're also, uh, they're also trying to secure the contract going forward with the HSO. Um, having this in the bank would be a good thing to have.
And.
That's happening right now.
To answer Kevin's question, I believe, uh, earlier about um the fire suppression system, um, and if it's not completely ready for uh certificate of occupancy, uh, when the season needed to start, I know that the uh SIMPEC, uh, Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center um in that initial first few concerts has a contingency plan um for uh what needs to be done to be able to put forth concerts um with uh, you know, having to then continue to rent trailers for that first uh few concerts a- and whatnot before the full certificate is achieved.
Okay, all right, so so let's, everybody's.
I wanted to answer that question because I didn't think it was actually answered.
Okay, uh, I'd like to move on to item F, the complex project third-party peer review um for McLean. Um, George is not on, correct?
Correct, I could, Chair, Tom and I, Tom Fitzgerald and I can handle that, if that's all right with you, Chair?
Yes, yes, because it is, there is a code requirement to for the complex project. So yeah, if you'd like to speak to that, that's great.
Yeah, and and in the, I I I won't belabor this. In your packets, uh, board members is uh the memorandum and also a copy of the engagement, and and all of those details are there. I just want to just, if I could focus on two things. Uh, the the most important thing here is is that the the cost for uh outside help on complex project analysis is uh always borne by the developers. There is absolutely no cost to the town. Uh, this is a procedural uh uh step that frankly uh is is another uh good thing to do simply because of transparency. The developer and and the town are on the same page here. I, and to Chair, we think that uh it's really perfunctory. I, we we can't imagine at the staff level why we wouldn't want to get uh another set of eyes and experts on on a project of such import. Um, we we don't think it's controversial at all that, uh, you know, you you do this, and uh it's coming to you uh with that recommendation. And again, you know, I've been asked, George couldn't be here today, but he wanted me to uh give you his strongest recommendation and also just reiterate that no cost to our taxpayers. Um, in terms of the timeline, I would just say that uh thirty to forty-five days is is expected for them to get their work done, and we appreciate your support. We do our best to answer any questions that come up um uh if the board has any.
Okay, and since um, just since yesterday, the um Conservation Inland Wetlands met last night. Tom, do you want to weigh in on that? Tom, F?
Uh, no, I can just say they met Wednesday um to finalize the selection. Um, and that their public hearing for the project is December sixteenth.
Uh, no, I can just say they met Wednesday um to finalize the selection um and that their public hearing for the project is December sixteenth. Um, and that McLean was, gave the okay and they signed off on their end for this third party as well.
The both side, both parties are interested in moving forward with this and it's really, it's just a requirement for us to approve per the code.
For the code.
Yep, okay. So I'm gonna ask for a motion effective November seventh, twenty twenty-five pursuant to section eighty-five debt six point one of the Simsbury Town Code of Ordinances to adopt the recommendation of the Inland Wetlands and Water Course Agency to engage a consulting firm, Barton and, which, I don't know. Could somebody want to pronounce Liguitas to perform an independent third-party peer review of application CC twenty-five dash twenty-five, seventy-five Great Pond Road, McLean Affiliates LLC. The review, the review shall substantially conform to Exhibit A, Task Order One, a scope of services for inland wetlands and water course agencies, complex projects, CC twenty-five, twenty-five, and five Great Pond Road, McLean Expansion, and not exceeding cost fifteen thousand, seven hundred dollars. The Board of Selectmen further directs the town manager to execute a contract to this effect.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, and now we move on to the meeting minutes. There was a couple of meeting corrections typo sent in, Tom, from um, I think Susan Van Cleef. Did we, uh, it was in an email? I think it was some typos.
I don't know if I got those, but if you would like to send them to me.
Okay.
I have them by email, Chair. You would just, if you could get a motion made to make those amendments, uh, we could certainly make them, but we do need uh the board.
What, what are the changes?
Yeah, I don't have it up. Somebody, can, can somebody pull them up? It was two typos, I believe, on her, the spelling of her name and something else.
Oh.
I can't multitask because I'm only on a tiny fifteen inch monitor, not a giant one.
If there were non-substantive changes, I guess we can consider. I just would feel better if I knew what they were, if Tom or somebody.
Nope, give us one minute. Well.
Somebody else is on them.
Thank you.
What was the name of the sender of that email, Wendy?
It was Susan Van Cleef. I think it was a couple of days ago.
Yep.
One was a typo on her name. I'll see if I can get it faster.
I've got it.
It wasn't just sent to me.
Yep. Uh, Wendy, for the record, yes, this was an email sent to you and I uh came in at four forty-eight on Wednesday. I'm gonna read it into the record now. Hello, Mark and Wendy. I'm not sure who to email about corrections to BOS meetings, so I'm emailing both of you. There are two small corrections to the BOS meeting minutes from October fifteenth. In the section where I spoke during public audience, my name uh was misspelled. It says K L E E instead of K L E E F. Also, carbon emissions should be carbon emissions, uh, not admissions. Those are the only changes. And she says, thank you for your help.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve the minutes, October fifteen, twenty twenty-five um, with those two changes and, and ask for a motion and second and then a discussion.
Well, I have some other changes.
Yeah, so, so.
Some of it.
And then second, it's Steve, and then you could make your changes. Isn't that how we've been doing it?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. Okay, go ahead, Steve.
Well, there's other changes to the minutes.
Okay.
Um, the first one is Kevin or Mr. Beal, he called a point of order. That's not acknowledged in here at all during the debacle uh where we called a recess at six oh seven. It should probably be mentioned in the main minutes.
I, I agree. I don't know where it's appropriate, but possibly in the, in the comments there that I uh, uh, asked for a point of order.
Okay, then the other, it's um, it, during the Selectment Liaison and Subcommittee Report, some of it's um, well, we used to have line numbers, so it's hard to, to say where. But like in the paragraph that begins, Mr. Antonio said EDC is at ground level. That is data collection, not dotted collection like dots. It's data, D A T A. So that, that's sort of relevant. And um, the first line of, he said at the zoning meeting on Monday, it's an application, not asking uh regarding the hotel. But I mean, it changes the context. Um, some of these things should be included. And in the final line of that same paragraph, it's at the zoning meeting, not the meeting, which could have been BOS or anything. So again, there are nuances, but they do change the context of what you're reading. So I felt it relevant to mention them.
Okay, thank you. So noted. Um, is there any other discussion? So all those in favor of approving the minutes with those four items corrected, say aye.
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 Okay, that's eight. Okay. Um, and then um, what else did I wanted to point out? I would just want to thank the Economic Development Commission for their annual reports. And the Eno Hall has updated the amounts. And um, there's some public gathering permits and I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Actually, I have one question. Oh, question. I'm so sorry. We're so close.
Point of order.
We'll put that in the minutes. Um, the do, we had one time talked about a comprehensive guide to rental facilities that we offer. Is that anywhere?
I'm, I'm sorry, Steve. Can you say that again? I'm, I'm not understanding.
A comprehensive guide to different facilities we offer for rentals, such as the library, the farms, you know, there's all these facilities and if people want to rent something, we're still doing a piecemeal instead of a comprehensive guide.
Yeah, we don't have one uh at, at the moment, but we're working on it. I think, you know, this is actually goes to the uh idea that you and your colleagues put up earlier uh in, in this calendar year uh to, to look at the monetization and the better use of of buildings and, and for rentals and stuff. And that, so I appreciate you bringing it up in this context. So um, give us a little time and we'll, we'll get back to the board on that.
Sounds great. Motion to adjourn.
Didn't we already do that? Are we all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Say aye.
Thank you, sorry.
Thank you.
For over forty years, SCM has been the voice of our town.
Bringing us together through local programming.
Education.
And live broadcasts.
SCM isn't just about television.
It's about empowering our community.
Ensuring our voices are heard during government meetings and celebrating milestones.
Like our high school graduations.
But today, SCM faces a challenge.
Our funding structure is based on television subscriptions.
It's no secret, people have been cutting the cord.
With a shift to internet-only subscriptions.
SCM receives less revenue.
Even though all our programming is freely available online.
We need your support.
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 Your donation can make a difference.
It will ensure that SCM remains open.
Continues to educate our youth.
And keeps our community informed.
Thanks to SCM, I've been honing my creative skills, helping me work towards my college degree.
SCM is crucial for keeping our community connected.
SCM isn't just here to broadcast local events. They're actually preserving Simsbury's history.
Join us. Join us in preserving Simsbury's voice.
Simsbury's voice. Together we can ensure that SCM continues to thrive.
For generations to come.
Visit our website.
Or scan the QR code on your screen to make your donation.
Every contribution.
Counts.
Thank you for supporting Simsbury Community Media.
Where your town.
Your schools.
And your government. Come together.